Good evening, good evening. Time to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. I am Councilor Patterson and we, for committees of the whole, we rotate members of council quarterly. So tonight I will be the acting chair for the Committee of the Whole meeting. So we will call the meeting to order and start by acknowledging that we are gathered in the traditional territory of the Coasts and Straits Salish people, specifically the Lakwangen-speaking people known today as the Songhees and the Iskwaymalt nations. And we recognize that their historic connections to the land continue. So we'll call the meeting to order and the first item of business is approval of the agenda. Moves by Councilor Braithwaite, seconded by Councilor Appleton. Any opposed? None opposed? That carries. And the next item of business is adoption of the Committee of the Whole minutes of November the 18th. Second, any changes, additions, amendments? No? All in favor? That carries. So tonight we have three delegations attending the meeting and they will each have five minutes to give their presentation. We will start tonight with item 4.1, Lavinia Rojas, if you would like to come forward and speak. If you would just introduce yourself, your municipality of residence and perhaps the subject that you're going to introduce. I hope I said your name right. Rojas?
Good evening, esteemed council members. I am here to urge you to support the resolution proposed by the District of Michoacan at the upcoming AVEC convention in Animo this April, which calls for the ban on the sale of fireworks on to consumers. Climate change is an urgent crisis we face and fireworks contribute to this problem in multiple ways. The environmental impact of fireworks extends beyond air pollution. They release contaminants, excuse me, that affect soil and water quality disrupting ecosystems. Wildlife is particularly vulnerable to fireworks displays. Many animals experience trauma from the loud noises and bright light, leading to increased injuries and disorientations. Health impact on sensitive populations. People with respiratory conditions. Fireworks release harmful partic- particles and gases like sulfur dioxide and carbon monoxide can trigger asthma attacks and acute lungitis. Increased susceptibility to respiratory infections. Individuals with neurological and mental health challenges. Loud noises can cause extreme distress for people with cerebral palsy, triggered in painful muscle spasm, autism, spectrum disorders, post-traumatic stress disorders, veterans and trauma survivors. Firework can trigger flashbacks, nightmares, increased anxiety, hyperreliance, sleep disruptions. Cardiac patients, short-term smoke exposure linked to heart attacks, arrhythmias. Additional alarming statistics. Air pollution increases by 42% during fireworks event. 300 million pounds of fireworks are released into the atmosphere annually. Let us prioritize the long-term health of our environment and the safety of our communities over brief moments of entertainment. I urge you to vote in support of this resolution at the AVEC convention in April. Thank you for your time and consideration. And I have my colleague Andrea Miller as well, who is in the agenda.
Hi, Andrea Miller of U Royal. It was actually supposed to be a two-part conversation, so thank you very much for hearing me. Hello, Mayor, and thank you for listening to our comments. Only a comprehensive provincial ban on backyard fireworks can address the issues of fireworks uniformly and effectively. Such a ban would eliminate confusion about where and when fireworks are allowed, streamline enforcement efforts, ensure consistent protection for all residents, animals, and the environment across the province, plus raise awareness, as many people don't know enough about local regulations. I would like to give a few examples of some damage that fireworks have caused. An estimated 40% of B.C. wildfires are started by human activity, and that includes fireworks. Just this last July in Animo, fireworks in Piper's Lagoon Park, an ecologically sensitive space, caused damage and sparked a fire. Injuries are common every year. In one instance, in Vancouver, a teen was hurt when fireworks blew up in his hand, but there are many, many examples. As Lavinia mentioned, war veterans and refugees from war-torn countries face PTSD and great stresses, also lots of problems for people with autism, neurological conditions, and so on. And she went into some details on that. But the noise really affects our animals. Horses on B.C. farms have panicked and injured themselves trying to flee from fireworks noises. They broke through fences, sustaining cuts, broken bones, and much worse. Dogs in areas like Oak Bay have escaped yards in terror, getting hit by cars and lost.
Excuse me, if I could just give you a signal that you have about 30 seconds left.
Oh, 30 seconds, okay. The rest is about seabirds and migratory birds, which face great difficulties and get hit buildings and get killed. And I was just going to say sadly, we all have examples of our own in our own families and communities of the effects. And Oak Bay has been very proactive and has bylaw 4375 already to regulate fireworks. We thank you very much.
Thank you so much for wrapping it up quickly. And I should add that the materials were distributed around council, so we have all received them. I don't know if there are any comments or questions around the council table, but seeing none, then thank you so much for that. The next presentation is the Vancouver Island South Film and Media Commission, Tara Lee Nova. I will invite you to come forward and give your name, municipality of residence.
Actually, I was thinking I had to recuse myself for the presentation, but the CAO said that I do not because I do sit on the board of the Vancouver Island South Film and Media Commission. So I just thought I'd take a moment just to say this is the brand-new film commissioner. She was brand-new from September last year, and we're very happy to have her in the room. Thank you.
Welcome, brand-new commissioner. Just if you...
Absolutely. So my name's Tara Lee Novak. As Hazel mentioned, I'm the new film commissioner for the South Island region, and I live in the city of Victoria. I came here for two reasons. One, to introduce myself. You would have known Kathleen Gilbert, who sat in the role for 14 years. She is having a much-deserved retirement. So I started in the fall, and I'm very grateful to be here. And my second reason for coming here is to say thank you. The District of Oak Bay has been very, very generous over the last few years. In 2024, your sponsorship of $10,000 helped us to attract a lot of different projects, equalling in this region specifically, a total of $80 million across, that was paid out across 1,900 South Island businesses. So I wanted to talk a bit about that. In Oak Bay, there were four movies of the week. You might have saw them filming across here. This is a big deal because it hires local crew. Okay? And we do, the folks who work in the office, there's myself, and there's Maureen, there's two full-time staff, they're working really hard to connect British Columbians to careers in the creative sector. Now, moving on to the next slide, I wanted to look at the region over the last five years. So on average, from 2019 to 2023, the film sector helped generate a local regional spend of 60 million each year. Across five years, that looks like 4,300 jobs across 167 productions. So the region really does benefit from film, and I want to thank you for being film-friendly. We can't do that without your partnership. We can go to the next slide, please. 2025, I want to say that I'm cautiously optimistic. I say cautiously because we are in unprecedented times. There's a lot happening that we can't predict. That said, there's a few signposts that make me feel optimistic. Number one, you might have seen in the news that the provincial government recently increased the tax incentives. So it used to be 26% across the province. Now it is 36%, and we have a regional boost of up to 18%. So that makes the South Island very attractive, and our office has been very busy since that announcement came in November. And then on January, that's when the incentives came through. If you enjoyed watching the Emmys, Shogun was a runaway success, and that was filmed up island. And Pamela Anderson had A Moment to Shine as well. Of course, she's based in Ladysmith. So these are major projects and major people that are drawing attention to the island. And yeah, both of those things have resulted in increased activity. So I am cautiously optimistic. There's going to be a really great project in the spring. It's not my job to announce it. As soon as I can, you'll see it across our social media channels, but I'm excited and I want to work closely with you all. Next slide, please. In addition to attracting movies, I really want everyone to see that the film is actually a vehicle for tourism. We are driving traffic to tourism. The team in the office are experts at destination development and locations. So for example, the other week, we got a call from a bicycle race, and they needed a location, a farm that could host 300 cyclists from across 30 different countries. So they came to us because our location database has 2,500 locations, and we're always looking for new locations. So it is not limited to just film. Okay? We can help all different aspects of tourism build their capacity. Throughout COVID, the film sector also helped put heads in beds, as we like to say. Laurel Point, for example, had 700 rooms rented because of a specific film project. That's a big accelerator. And our visitors to the region from film are qualified. They're coming with millions of dollars to spend, so we want to make sure that we're ready for them. Next slide, please. Okay, here's actually what I really want to talk to you about. I want to make sure that you're leveraging our wins as your wins when you're doing up your annual report. There's a lot of things that are happening behind the scenes that you can use to your advantage because you're working with us. For example, film helps diversify the CRD. We know who the main employers are, and as we get more and more busy, those 4,300 jobs will hopefully turn into even more jobs. So we are very happy to provide you with our year-end report, and you can capture how many different jobs were created. And public sector revenue generation. What that means is, again, our location database right now has 2,500 locations. I think this municipal hall might be in that database. That means that businesses can rent out their location when they're not using it and make very good money. We've heard from different business owners that this has helped them bridge the gap during COVID or other recovery times. They can rent their space out for three days, and it can equal a couple months of rent. So we want to make sure people are leveraging their assets, including municipalities. And support small businesses. So I mentioned the tax incentives. We have a number of production companies here in town. When they get a green light, they create, you know, anywhere from 10 to hundreds of new jobs. So that's how we help support small businesses because they don't necessarily have the ability to hire an office staff at first, but they can send us their locations. Sorry about that. And lastly, can I say one more thing? On April 17th, we're going to have an electric battery workshop. I'd love for you to come. This sector is actually very innovative in the green space, and you're going to hear more about that from us. So April 17th, we'd love to see you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Novak, for that presentation. You might, I'm not sure, we might have a few questions here from council. I certainly know when there's movies about, it always causes a buzz in the community, although I'm disappointed we're not getting an inside scoop on the things to come. Nevertheless, around the council table, Councilor Green.
Thanks very much, and through you, Acting Mayor, to you, thank you very much for the presentation. And it especially has meaning for some of us who are, I'm the liaison and alternate liaison, Councilor Braithwaite, to our Oak Bay Tourism Committee. So that's definitely a group. I don't know if you've connected with them yet, but...
I think I've had like a preliminary introduction, but yeah.
Yeah, certainly there would be advantages. And behind you is the Business Improvement Association, local small business on Oak Bay Avenue. So that's Heather Leary.
Much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Novak. I suppose if there's a casting call for council, you could keep us in mind. And the next delegation, Oak Bay Business Improvement Association, I will invite Heather Leary to come forward. Name, municipality, and the subject.
Good evening, Heather Leary. Township of Iskwaymalt. Second protest that I work in this community, by the way. Will I advance the slides or will you advance the slides? Do you want...
Or you can say next slide.
All right. Well, let's see if I can make it work. So I know I have five minutes. This will be quick with much smaller numbers. So we wanted to talk to you today because we are looking to expand our Music in the Village program to be all-year-round, focusing mainly on peak times of summer and Christmas time. So in 2024, last year, we hosted 22 musicians on 19 dates. They come in groups of one, two, and occasionally three. Well, that can be a large group for a street-side activation. And they play a range of musical styles, and we get quite a range of musicians coming. It's not a presentation if you don't have a tech problem, right? So we plan the mode to present the music over the summer currently in every commercial block within the BIA catchment area. So the benefits are shared by all of the businesses, as well as perhaps the pain if you don't like the music. So then we make sure that we get a good roster of musicians. They're all professionals, and also there's a huge range of musical styles that come out. And also a great range of ages. This is a young lady that came out, played sort of Celtic music out in front of Side Street Studio. She's played all over the world. And this is another group that played more folk music at the other end, across from Garden Works. We get a very good response when we put musicians up there. Why expand the program? A few reasons. One, I've been getting questions about summer bookings since December. Musicians are very excited about this. We pay them, and I'd like to add that we will be fully funding this initiative from our budget. We were very grateful to have some communities' money supporting us when we bridged this initiative when it first was launched during COVID. But the plan was always that this would be folded into our annual budget so that we can support the musicians and do it from our own working money. So primarily, we want to, first of all, we've established a great deal of trust within the community, and usually if something's going on on the avenue that's unusual, I get a phone call because everyone thinks the BIA must have done it. So we want to make sure that we continue to present that. We are seeing more buskers showing up who are positioning themselves as fundraisers, but there are no checks and balances in place currently to know if they really are fundraising. The community just has a level of trust when things are going on on the avenue that that is what happening, and they very well could be. We just don't have any idea. Musicians are also required to adhere to a code of conduct so that we know that they conduct themselves respectfully with the public, with the shop owners, with people that are on the street. We also want to make sure that we are working, continuing to expand our efforts to make the village a dynamic, interesting place for people to come. We want to delight and surprise people on a regular basis, so we want to have things happening that are unexpected, as well as our big-plan things, like our 25th anniversary of Christmas festival coming in November. We also feel it's important to promote arts and culture in Oak Bay. We're in fact are just putting together the finishing touches on our new spring banners, which will feature two new pieces of art from Oak Bay artists sponsored by the business community. And we want to make sure Oak Bay stays a year-round destination that people can come and enjoy activations that don't involve road closures every time, don't involve traffic or parking disruptions. These are things that people can come and enjoy. And currently, we have only administered it in the summer. We've seen a call for more vibrancy through other times, especially through Christmas time, where we may shorten the blocks to one hour instead of two, given the weather, but just to bring a sense of dynamic stuff happening on the avenue. And potentially supporting other events that may come to the avenue where appropriate, we would consider putting musicians to support those as well, but on a case-by-case basis, depending on how that organizer felt about that. We are, yeah, excited about the things that we're going to be able to do going forward for the next five years with the renewal of our mandate. So we've taken feedback from the community into consideration and are trying to present a more varied program of stuff. I think that's my last slide.
Thanks so much for that presentation, Ms. Leary, and certainly for everything you do. The work that you do certainly enlivens the district, and I know... Now, if I, there's probably a few questions coming from council. I see Councilor Braithwaite.
Thanks very much, and through you, Chair. So just to clarify, in Oak Bay right now, we only have the music program in certain months, and you're just looking to expand it to the whole year?
Yes.
So, and seeing that, that's an affirmative to that question, then I'm looking to Ms. Williams to say, what would be the process then? Would we have to put a new proposal towards, to council to ask for an expansion of the program? Or is it something that can be done within the mandate that we have already?
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Chair, and through you. My inclination is that this will fit within the existing mandate, and that Ms. Leary was here to provide just an explanation of the expanded program. If there are additional requirements that a permit might be triggered, then the BIA would have to apply for permits for that expanded time, but there's nothing that I'm aware of.
Thank you so much. And just one other point. I know that in Victoria, they permit all of their buskers because they were running into issues, as you have mentioned, that we have started running into in Oak Bay, where people are coming and busking, but also saying that they're collecting money for certain charities, when we don't know whether that's true or not. So I think this is something that is very supportable, to have all of the busking go through the BIA, because then we do have control of it. I know you get lots of people applying for it and lots of different types of music. So I think that seeing an expansion of this program will be really great for the avenue. So thank you for bringing it forward.
And if I can just add, although they, they're street-side entertainers, but they don't technically busk, so we pay them. And so then they don't solicit for money on the street. So they're allowed to accept tips, but we don't allow them to put pressure on the public to give them money. They're well-paid, and I feel that they're very happy with what they get. And the public will often reward them with tips, but it's very different from how the buskers, they make their living from the money that they get from the public, and they pay a fee to participate in the City of Victoria program, so.
Just for that clarification.
Any other questions or comments, Mayor?
Thank you, and through you, Chair. Just a quick question, as you're expanding this, I know there's been some talk in the past about making sure that there's sort of adequate space for the performers and things. Are there any contemplation as this has had some time to ruminate? Is there deemed to be any need for additional, like little sort of like bump-outs on the street or something like that, or any other aspects that would sort of create a bit of a space for some of these performers to set up? Or is that, have you found that over the last few years that it's actually worked reasonably well on the streets as they are? Through you, Chair.
So while I say it's worked reasonably well, especially as a program that we kind of put together in a bit of a hurry, I will say that the process of the village plan, when we get to that stage, we would be looking at how the public space can be better utilized for things like this. The current space, we don't have a town square. We create a town square when we close the road, I feel, and create that community gathering space in the village. It's done elsewhere in the municipality as well. But there's not a lot of space where we can have, say, a bigger group or where people can stop or sit or whatever. So in terms of doing something like bump-outs or sidewalk widening, we would definitely be advocating for something like that, and it would be suitable for this program and a number probably of other things as well through the year.
Thank you. Through you, Ms. Chair, thank you, Ms. Leary.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none. Ms. Leary, thank you for joining us, and of course, we wish you well with this year's And with that, we move forward to item five, which is the mayor and council verbal reports. Council are all very busy with activities both locally and regionally, and so this is a chance for the council members to share what they have been participating in with the rest of council and members of the audience. So why don't we go around the table, and I will start with Councilor Green.
I don't have a lot to report. I attended the town hall with all of my colleagues, and that was the primary event in the last few weeks. There was a Regional Water Supply Commission meeting planned for tomorrow, but it has been canceled. And at the moment, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Green. Councilor Appleton?
Thank you, Chair. So I guess I will start with, I guess, start at the conclusion. It was my pleasure, and in this slightly difficult time, to step down as the Chair of the Greater Victoria Public Library at the January 28th meeting. So I concluded my maximum two-year term, and I'm now sitting as a trustee. So I will inform, it's been, it was an extremely valuable and very, very, and a significant period of time for me personally, and I was so grateful to be of service to that board. So really enjoyed that time. I will let council know that the incoming Chair of the Library Board is Shahira Kerr, who, as council may recall, worked with me as Vice Chair for the last couple of years and is now stepping into the Chair role. She is a citizen representative from the city of Victoria. Stepping into the Vice Chair role is Duncan Cavins, Council Representative from the Township of Iskwaymalt as Vice Chair. And there are several. In addition to that, there are five new representatives on the board this year, so there's been quite a bit of turnover and so lots of new faces around the table. Just further to the library file, I will just let council know that the Library Board's new strategic framework is just in the process of landing. So the 2025 to 2027 strategic framework is arriving, and I will bring that to council once it's finalized and have everybody have a look over that. I will also bring to both council and the public's attention, you may be aware that heading into the last portion of this year and into this, it's a challenging time for library boards, both locally, provincially, nationally, just with respect to managing the many demands on their services for being a frontline public service. And council, I'll bring to council's awareness that there were a number of both local and national news coverage, news coverage pieces that I was part of with respect to challenges facing libraries, both on the social services side and providing services, public services to folks that need it. This is, as council is aware, one of the last free, open public spaces that's welcoming to all. And certainly, our system and systems across the province and across the country are straining under the ability to provide those services. So your local library, our branch, and the GVPL has never been more relevant than it is right now. So our council's support and the region's support for the library is extremely important right now. And also, as council may have seen, there is an... And also, as council may have seen, there is an unprecedented assault on the values of the library and the placement of the library as a bastion of free speech and accessibility for all, a safe space for all. So you will see challenges coming from conservative elements across the country for folks who would like to censor and constrict the role of the library, and this is extremely troubling. And I know that this council and the GVPL has really committed itself to providing that accessible space, that welcoming space for everybody. Everybody is welcome at our libraries, and it is, again, a bastion, literally a bastion and literally the stronghold of free speech. So as we enter a pretty troubling time in terms of dialogue, this has never been more relevant. So I, I know this council has always been a big supporter of the library. I will always be a big supporter of the library, and you will see myself and my colleagues from, elected representatives from the GVPL Board take a strong advocacy role at this upcoming UBCM convention with respect to funding and security for libraries. So thank you for your indulgence, Chair. And I will just add to that, and thank you very much for giving me that time. I will just say that in terms of my role with, I was unfortunately away from Oak Bay at the last Heritage Foundation lecture, in my role as liaison to the Heritage Foundation, but I will make a point of pointing out that, I think, as everybody's aware, the next Heritage Foundation lecture is this upcoming Thursday, 7:00 p.m. at the Windsor Pavilion. Encourage everybody to attend. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, especially for the remarks about the library, Council Appleton. I think it's really appropriate that we are, we all keep those things in mind. Council Braithwaite?
Thank you. Mine won't be quite as heavy as that. I attended the Destination Greater Victoria and Chamber of Commerce joint event with Oak Bay Tourism, along with Council Green, at the Oak Bay Beach Hotel, which was a great place to see so many different groups come together. And then also, as my role as President of the Royal MacPherson Theatre Society, I conducted, along with some colleagues, extensive interviews for the Executive Director position, and I'm happy to say that we've secured a wonderful replacement, Jennifer Johnson, who will start at the beginning of March. And we also had a staff appreciation night for the Royal MacPherson Theatre Society as well. And I think, wanted to thank staff for putting on the advisory body orientation for our new volunteers, which I attended with a few other counselors. That was, it was really well-attended by the volunteers, and I think they, they quite enjoyed it. Of course, the town hall, there was some GV LRA meetings. I've had track meetings, hundred-year celebration meetings, meetings for, with the, with the BIA representatives and with numerous residents, which is always something that is really one of my favorite things to do. And then just as a little plug, this Saturday is the rummage sale at the, with my Parks, Rec and Culture hat on. It's the rummage sale at the Monterey Centre, so don't forget to go to the rummage sale because that's how they get money to do all the different activities that they're able to do with the seniors in our community and other things. So thank you.
Thanks, Council Braithwaite. Council Smart?
Thank you. In addition to my liaison roles, I attended the, the Arts Commission meeting as well as the Heritage Commission meeting these past months. Also really enjoyed the municipal volunteer dinner that we all attended. That was a very successful event, so great to chat with the breadth of residents that put so much time into making this community a great place to be. Also had the opportunity to attend the Winter Weather Response Information Center with Councilor Patterson and Councilor Watson. We saw, and Mayor Murdock was also there, I believe. We saw presentations from City of Victoria, Island Health, BC Housing, and the Salvation Army. Those are really informative session. The, I also had the honor of sitting on a panel at UVIC recently, on the future of cities, where we had dozens of students and residents in attendance for a really dynamic discussion, both really sobering questions from our youth around how little hope a lot of them felt for their future, and also so much energy and solutions towards how they were going to improve the lives for everybody. So I just, it was a very inspiring night. Really enjoyed recently attending the oil spill response demo with a few of our counselors by Western Canadian Marine Response. So it was so impressive to see the emergency on-call center in action, gave me a lot of confidence of the plans we have in place, while at the same time showed our complete vulnerability should a disaster such as the one being modeled at Constance Bank with an oil spill and, and seeing how it could potentially impact our entire coastline in Oak Bay. So a combination of feeling very impressed at, at the plans that we have in place for our community while feeling vulnerable, having so much coastline here in, in our community. That's everything. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Smart. Mayor?
Thank you, Chair. And for anybody wondering why I'm sitting here, this is something that we do as the committee of the whole, the acting mayor takes over the Chair role and, and, and chairs the meeting, and I just swap places with them, and it gives everybody a chance to, to, to chair some of these meetings, and I appreciate Council Patterson taking us up. I just quickly want to acknowledge the work of the Oak Bay Police and other regional police and law enforcement agencies. They just completed their polar plunge fundraising efforts for the Special Olympics this last weekend, and they raised a little over $45,000 and jumped in the icy cold water. I chose not to jump in the icy cold water this year. I have done it in the past, but I was there to cheer them on, and certainly do appreciate that camaraderie and that, that effort, in one of many ways, that the, the police forces contribute to the community, but I just wanted to acknowledge that because it was a very cold day and even colder in the water. Yeah, I think the only other thing was just, I think Council Braithwaite was failed to mention is that there's the Yes Awards coming up in a week and a half, and I just want to acknowledge her, her efforts on organizing that. And I think just, there was a, I think Council Appleton noted that the Heritage Talk is coming up this Thursday. It is next Thursday, the 27th, that is on it, so I just want to, I do this all the time when I think of this, this coming Thursday, but it's the Thursday after, so I just want to make sure anybody's rushing out of here to get to the, to there on the 20th is 27th. Other than that, I'll be happy to pass it on. I have a chance to talk at every meeting, so I'll leave it here.
Thanks, Mayor, and Council Braithwaite, you, it's been covered. Thank you, thank you. So for, for my, a couple of the things that I have been working on, I am the Liaison to Victoria Family Court and Youth Justice. I think I'm in year five of a two-year term, but they allow for overhauling. So, and I'm, I'm really pleased to report on progress on two issues that we have been advocating, working hard on. The first, the funding for one counselor role with the Mobile Youth Services Team, or MIST, they've been in the news a lot lately, has been confirmed through now to September 30th, 2026. That is a federal grant through the Department of Justice Victims Fund, and so we're, we're really pleased that that will now allow Mia Golden to continue her work in a full-time capacity with her new partner, San HPD's Shauna Bainbridge is, that's the team now. Gord McGee has, has served out his term, so he has gone back to whatever the other duties are that he does. The second report that I would like to give is, I did visit the pantry. It is a new initiative by the Youth Empowerment Society. It's located on Yates Avenue in the City of Victoria, and it's a new initiative by the Youth Empowerment Society in response to food insecurity for youth under the age of 19 who are not permitted to go to food banks. They're not allowed to be served at food banks unless they are attached to a family. And we certainly see through the Youth Empowerment Society that, that food insecurity is, is quite an issue with a number of youth that are in the city. And so the, the Yes, the Youth Empowerment Society, we call them Yes, is also federally funded to a large extent. And we are just waiting to hear the outcome of a grant that was applied for, for youth gang prevention, and that would give federal funding for five years, so fingers crossed we get that. It's been a busy week for CREST. I serve as a liaison to CREST, the Emergency Communications System, and we've had our executive finance and building task force meetings, all within the last few days, with the board meeting coming up. And really, the, the big topic of discussion right now is the, the call-answer levy. That, again, has been in the news media quite extensively as of late because of the West Shore municipalities who are, are having quite an increase in tax increases because of the way their, their levy is, is managed. And so that is something that we feel at CREST that we need to become, that it's going to become a more active file provincially, and we need to be inserting ourselves into discussion. It's unlikely that the province will do anything with this until they actually complete their review of ECOM, but certainly, as it comes to the table, CREST will want to be there to ensure that some of the funding goes to the emergency radio communication system that is an important component of emergency services. And with that, there were a number of other events that I attended with everyone around the council table, but I will, I will leave it at that for tonight, for my report. And the next item on the agenda is the public comment and question period. So for any people that are in the gallery that wish to speak, this is your opportunity. Now, there, there is an item 7.1 about our emergency response program that is subject to public input, so if you want to speak about that, please wait until after that is presented to us. But if there is anyone that would like to speak, come forward. Once, twice, no? All right. Well, I don't see anyone online and, and with no one in the gallery wanting to participate, then we will move on to item number 7.1, the updated municipal emergency response plan. We have with us tonight our fire chief, Frank McDonald, and also a new person that he will introduce.
Thank you, Acting Mayor, and good evening, and to members of council as well. As the Chair indicated, I'm happy to introduce Ms. Gillette Schenk. Ms. Schenk is our new emergency program manager. She's been in her role for just a little over five weeks now, is an awesome addition to the district and our emergency management team. Also pleased to reintroduce to council Mr. Jim Lamort from Smart Risk Control. He is the Principal Consultant at Smart Risk Control, who's been working with us on redeveloping our emergency management plan, and also a real Oak Bay treasure as a resident. Jim, if there's any chance you could join us up here to, because I will definitely be taking advantage of Mr. Lamort's vast experience to answer any technical questions. So I believe council has had an opportunity to read the staff report as well as review the, the main plan that was attached, as well as the plan framework. I did have a few questions that were forwarded my way today, so I just thought I'd maybe open and maybe try and elaborate on some of those answers, or on some of those questions prior to getting into a broader discussion with council on, on any interest that you have as far as the comments or, or questions on the plan. I think it's, it's super important that we look at the emergency response plan as really a living document, and when you've got a living document like that, it, it's super important that it, it remains active and stays current. When they become stale, it ends up creating a huge burden on the organization to really start from scratch, and we have now got to a point where we now have a current community risk assessment, we have a current emergency program bylaw, as well as we now have our emergency response plan that's in place. So this now allows us to move forward with a whole bunch of best practices for emergency planning, as well as we now have a super important framework that's come out of the emergence, the most recent emergency program bylaw, where we're able to have an emergency management planning committee. Our first meeting for that in the history of Oak Bay is coming up in April. So that is a really important thing as far as like how we can keep documents like this current and active and receive super important operational direction from within our, our senior staff on policies, procedures, and how best to prioritize things, you know, moving forward. So that's just one, one opening comment. Having things like the, the community risk assessment developed has allowed really an informed approach to how we're able to develop the changes to the emergency response plan. So in there, there's now revisions to our, what are called hazard-specific plans. So there's a couple of new ones that are, are new based on changes in climate and, and things like that, as well as, you know, some aspects that are renamed to align with best practices that are going on in the emergency management field, as well as a rewrite of some of the processes in there. So it really, overall, puts us in, in good stead as far as those operational plans and allows us to, to move forward. And then with those, those key sort of building blocks that are now allowing us to have a solid foundation, we're now able to move ahead into things like emergency management training for the district and then rely on all of these support documents. So with changes like the Emergency Disaster Management Act, there are changes to certain processes which are now incorporated into our new plan, which then allow us to move ahead with elected officials training and key pieces like states of local emergency, which we rely on council for, especially the mayor, whoever the mayor or acting mayor is, to be the sole person that can be involved as, as far as the authorization of that. So these are all sort of key building blocks that are allowing us to move forward, and then we've also developed a multi-year emergency management plan, or emergency management training plan for the district, which focuses on site training, emergency operations center training, and elected officials training. So that is a best practices approach. Not all communities do that. So at the site, you've got people like Public Works, or it could be Parks or Recreation Staff that are working at a site level. They'll have things that are going on that, that they haven't necessarily had formal emergency management training on, so they'll be able to receive that, and that will then allow them to basically speak the same language and work off the same emergency management system as the Emergency Operations Center. So the Emergency Operations Center is really an organization that exists to support the site, as well as assist with governance for the municipality in a state of emergency. So those two pieces fit together and allow us to evolve and, and develop more sophisticated training and have it, doing it in building blocks so that we can move just beyond baseline training into more operational training and then into functional training, and then it becomes a cycle, well, allows you to rebuild, learn, repeat, and, and then becomes an ingrained practice where people aren't afraid to do it, and as a, as a best practice, you start to operationalize and merge operations center or your plans on a much more frequent basis because the organization is capable, trained, and, and ready to do it. So that's what we're now starting to operationalize. We started our first EOC baseline training last year. As you're currently aware, we're working with a consultant to schedule our first elected officials training that's coming up, where you'll see some of the material that's included in, in the, the district's emergency response plan. And then it will also allow us to, you know, move ahead with the site training, like indicated. Next week, we are also, well, Ms. Schenk is before council with her first UBCM grant to support EOC equipment and supplies and training funds. So these are all linking building blocks that we're now able to, you know, action because of where we've got to with these very important pieces of work that, you know, Mr. Tolson really helped to get us over the finish line on. And I also had some questions about, you know, how, moving forward, we're going to assess and manage our residents and community readiness, and, and one of the key pieces or best ways to do that. And one of the key pieces, or best ways to do that, is through our community survey. And we've now have done our first cycle of that, where we now have some baseline data, where we can now really understand what our current states of individual and family preparedness are across the district, and then allows us to measure our service levels and programs, and then measure that against future surveys, and continue to inform and improve as we move forward. But it's super important that you get the baseline data, because you don't know what your level of preparedness is if you're just assuming. So it is super important, and it really allows us to move forward. And then we will also be working on rebuilding our website content, and trying to build a more interactive and informative platform to support the community. Some of those aspects, they take time. We are a small and nimble team, but, you know, we can't do everything at once and do it well. So we have had to really prioritize what we've been doing and how we've been doing it, but, you know, we are definitely making, you know, good progress. So with those baseline comments sort of out of the way, you've all had a chance to read the staff report and the main plan, and happy to answer any questions that council may have, or my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief McDonald. I do have one question for you, and that's really with the plans that are being submitted now. And I know that the province is also developing a plan, although there's a lack of detail to that right now, which makes it very difficult for us to develop. But I am wondering, with the plan that you're working on right now, does that then get submitted to the province for their approval? Like, do they have a vetting on this? Because I know emergency planning is unique, really, to every district in some way.
Thank you, Chair. So there is a requirement under the Emergency Disaster Management Act for municipalities to have emergency management plans. There is not a requirement for those plans to be submitted to the province, or actually for council to approve them. So you'll notice on the signature page that Ms. Williams is the signature as far as the approval, approver of the plan. And as long as we do have those plans, and the current, we are meeting the requirements of the legislation. However, the regulations that are also, I should say, the emergency management plans need to meet the intent of the legislation, as well as the regulations, and the regulations have not yet been released, so.
Thank you for that response, Chief. And now I'll take it back to council. Are there questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Acting Mayor, to Chief McDonald. Thank you so much. It was so great to see this report, and for me, as a newer counselor, to get a sense of the framework that we'll be going forward with. I just wanted a few questions. One of them was with regards to the EOC sites, and I wondered, have they received a pre-disaster building assessment that would say outline if there were any mitigation strategies that should be undertaken to improve those? Likely that work has already happened, but I'm just not aware of it myself, and I wondered if you could just update me as to what assessment has been done to those EOCs, and has all the work been done to ensure those locations are as prepared as possible? Thank you.
Chief McDonald?
Can I defer?
You may, as long as it's to another person in the room.
Thank you, Councilor Smart. So there have been some assessments done. This building has had, and I, you know, I don't know I'm the best person to, I know Mr. Graham is on the line, he might be able to answer better than I. I do know there has been some analysis done, but I do know there hasn't been seismic work done to address any shear walls or anything like that. We do not really have any post-disaster building, other than we are currently working on a feasibility study for a new public safety building, which will address all of our emergency management needs once that is completed. The fire hall has had some seismic upgrading strictly to the apparatus base, but not to the rest of the building. And the relocation from a Level 1, Level 2 standard activation from council chambers down to the fire hall is considered an operational upgrade with regards to the building generator. We do have a generator here, but with the capacity we've got at the fire hall, as well as the seamless impact to our transition to support our operations, it ends up being a better site. But there, you know, we are really in a tough shape as far as our infrastructure, as far as having like a turnkey building, or, you know, any assessments that have been done and actioned and financed to support it. That is definitely, I think, you know, one of the areas that the infrastructure replacement plan would be looking to deal with on a new perspective.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions? Councilor Smart?
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Acting Mayor, and Chief McDonald, I'll put you on the spot again. This is an easier question, I hope. I'm just wondering, with the reference to forming a policy group, who decides whether a policy group is required, and who decides who is in that policy group? If you could just clarify that? Thank you.
Chief?
Thank you again through the chair. So typically, the size, the type, and complexity of the event generally informs whether or not a policy group is required. So in most instances, if we're going to activate an emergency operations center for a severe weather event, which are our highest frequency event, we don't need a policy group to support that. It's typically for much longer duration, much larger activations where we do it. The, I think the previous plan did not identify who the policy group should be composed of. You know, Mr. Lamorte can probably provide the best explanation of it, but you typically want a broader cross-section of people. Because we were starting from really a blank slate for us, we started with mayor and council, and there's the ability to add onto that as needed. But it's, you know, at least we've got a starting point now, as we continue to move forward. Like I said, it's a living document. Jim, I'm not sure if you wanted to build on that?
It goes back to the purpose of a policy group, and that is to make high-level decisions on general policies that exist, and maybe creating new policies that are unique to an emergency. So it's a common misunderstanding that the policy group must consist of council, and that's not necessarily true. It could be representatives from council. In a longstanding emergency, where you're active 24/7 for three weeks or something, not everybody's going to be available. So you could rotate members of council into the policy group. And the other important thing is in a multi-agency response, such as an oil spill. So there are some legal requirements for Coast Guard, federal government, to participate in that. Instead of having two different policy groups, they could join in one with the municipality and the province and federal government. So they can iron out their policies and give direction to the Emergency Operations Center at one time. So that's the real purpose of a policy group. All, as the chief says, it all depends on the situation, and it would be a decision by council. You have legal responsibility for responding to an emergency, so it's your decision about who's in there, in consultation with the EOC director.
Thank you, Mr. Lamorte. Councilor Smart?
Thank you. Just one final question through you, Acting Mayor, just with regards to all this great information. Will this new plan and sort of all the related checklists and plans, as they get updated, be added to our council handbook? Was just my last question. Thank you.
That may actually be also a question for Ms. Williams.
So, great question. One of the priority pieces we're working right now is actually updating and documenting the distribution list, who actually has plans. We don't actually know who has all of the emergency response plans within the district right now. So it would probably make sense that, you know, not all of council all have the full document. It might be, you know, limited to the liaison appointed to the emergency planning committee, yet to be refined, but it is one of the discussion points that's coming up at our emergency planning committee.
Thank you, Councilor Smart. Did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Yes, and should council be interested in having access to a copy of it? We do have a secure online portal where we share information with council, and we can certainly put one up there that we maintain up to date. I think, as the chief was saying, when we get 15, 20, 30 of these paper copies distributed around, keeping them up to date is a little bit of work, but we will have one in a central location where council can access it.
Thank you for that. Mayor?
Thank you, Chair. I think I've got a copy, a paper copy from 2014 of sitting in a bookshelf at home, probably not of use. Yeah, and I'll, the conversation has spurred me, it just reminds me, we're going to have to, obviously, if the meeting's going to start in April, that we need to go through an appointment process for that liaison prior to that meeting. So, I have three sort of high-level questions. One, I just, I didn't see it identified in here. Is there an obligation for the district to be essentially self-reliant in the case of an emergency for a specific amount of time? Or is that sort of on a case-by-case basis? I'm just kind of curious, what are obligations as an individual district in a region, should a disaster happen?
Chief, or Mr. Lamorte, whoever can handle that.
There's no obligation in the provincial legislation for a certain amount of time. In fact, it's the reverse, that you're required to coordinate response within the municipality, but also if you need help to reach out, reach up, and reach out to your neighbors, reach up to the province for assistance as well. And there's protocols for that in this plan. So we certainly encourage the public to be prepared, because not every event will result in personnel at their doorstep helping them immediately.
Great, thank you. I guess a follow-on to that then is really through you, Chair. You know, appreciate this is largely driven by the provincial structure and the requirements of that. I'm curious if there's, you know, what is the, this is a very internal-looking document, but so are there, you know, structures within this provincial thing that allow us to still use, do things like support either volunteers and/or, you know, training for the broader public, so we can educate people and help them, you know, stock up on appropriate things to be self-reliant in the course of their day-to-day life?
Chief?
Through the chair. Another great question. So typically, when we're talking about things like neighborhood emergency preparedness, and individual and family emergency preparedness, we don't typically rely on our emergency response plan to help inform programs like that. Those are typically programs that are a key function of the Oak Bay Emergencies Program. So we have, I think everyone is familiar, we have the Emergency Support Services, which provide accommodation options for people that are displaced, you know, from homes, primarily from fires, but for other reasons as well. And we have an amateur radio group. But we're also looking at ways where we can tie into our volunteers to provide neighborhood and emergency preparedness training to residents. So there's a lot of communities around the province that have very successful teams that provide a huge amount of excellent information to improve community resilience. And it's probably the single most important thing that we could do, is having a community that is self-sufficient for, we're trying to support people to be self-sufficient for seven days. And if you're in a position where you can do that, the pressure on us as a local government to have to respond and support residents on an emergency response aspect is tremendously alleviated, and allows us to really focus on those highest priority functions. So that is a hugely important thing to do, and probably a really good way to do it.
Thank you. So my last question then is just the, I appreciate all of this, the reaching out sideways and so forth. And I should also just welcome Ms. Schenk to the team as well, it's nice to see you here, and Mr. Lamorte for joining us tonight as well. That, those linkages, those reach out to neighbors and so forth, I must, does this plan then sort of align language-wise and protocol-wise and so forth with all the other jurisdictions in the region? Is that the, is that part of this process with the new plan?
Thanks, Chair. So this plan aligns with the BCE Emergency Response Management System. So all communities or all local governments in the province are supposed to align emergency response planning, as well as emergency response with an incident command system, and an emergency management system and planning system that aligns with B sounds. On the, more on the community side, it is more, yeah, strictly more of an organic neighbor, helping neighbors side, and there is a ton of material and programs and options on how to support the community, but they're not following a plan like this. It's definitely something that's standalone and a service that we would provide. Jim, I'm not sure if you want to provide any more comments on that?
Yeah. To your question about the reaching sideways, all of the municipalities in this region here have adopted basically the same language, the same positions, EOC positions, primarily so they can talk to each other, but also they can send people from Esquire Malt into your EOC. They take off their hats, they work for you, and you do the same. So that exchange is possible. In fact, it's one of our principles of this plan.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mayor, Councilor Green?
Thank you. And Chief, you'll be happy to know that I'm one of those people that are prepared for seven days. And I'm also the block watch captain for my street, and so I'm trying to get everybody on my street prepared as well. So I am trying to do that within my little area. I also, like the mayor, have a binder at home that I'm sure has not been updated since Dave Cockle was chief, so it is a little bit out of date. And so that was really along my questioning as well, is if there is going to be, I understand from what Ms. Williams said, there's going to be a portal where we can find that information. But if we don't have access to electricity, then perhaps, yes, the liaison could have a copy, but I'm wondering if there could also be a couple of copies at the hall as well, that we could have access to, just because, or at the fire hall, or whatever. Just because if we don't have access to electricity, then we wouldn't even be able to go onto a portal.
Chief, or Ms. Williams?
Easy to comment on that. Within our Emergency Operations Center supplies and stores, we do have copies of the plans there, so that, you know, if there is an activation, there always will be resources here that are available.
Thank you. Councilor Green?
Through you, Chair, to our chief and coordinator. Thank you. Thank you very much for the report. And it may be implicit in the report, but my question relates to a communications plan with the general public, and how do they access the information? I think we've got a partial answer through a portal on the website, but for those people who don't have computer access, are there ways of reaching them as well? And do you have an engagement plan in mind as we go through the exercise and the planning exercise? And I guess it speaks to the level of readiness of this community in the case of an emergency. And if you can't answer those questions tonight, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it would be something I would be interested in knowing. Thank you.
Chief McDonald, do you want to share any comments on that?
Yeah. Through the chair. Thank you. Excellent question, Ms. Green. It's, it is a difficult question to answer in a succinct way. There are a lot of There are a lot of moving parts there. We do have a dated emergency information plan. It doesn't really, I think, align with the intent of what you're really, you know, describing. We do have a new emergency communications toolkit, which we are now operationalizing or testing at least twice a year. And so, at least is providing us like an outreach framework that allows us to at least have the tools in-house where we can activate things at 24/7/365. So, you know, when you look at things from our lens, we look at it from the perspective that we have to support the district through eighty percent of the year that is not during regular working hours. And so, if we don't have our staff and the skills and the tools to be able to, you know, reach out and communicate, we're really in tough shape. So, as a, you know, sort of the starting point, we are, you know, twice a year now testing to make sure that we all have all the documentation on how to log into the website, activate the notification banners, and be able to update that as well as utilize the public alerting notification system we have, which is alertable. So, we're now doing that, and we're trying to do that in coordination with when the province is doing their alert-ready tests, so that, you know, there's a good best practice approach. And then we're also trying to link our messaging on the social media side, so that at least there is a coordinated, you know, approach moving forward, but we don't really have a formalized plan with regards to how we're moving forward with informing the public, yet.
Councilor Green.
Just follow-up comments through you, Chair. Thank you very much, and I know that's not an easy question, and you're right, it's evolving and it's full of all kinds of moving parts, but I really appreciate the fact that you're working on this now and preparing the community in your own way. And I think, I think the work you've done to date has been terrific, so I really appreciate that, and I know residents do as well. Thank you.
Councilor Appleton?
Thank you, Chair, and through you. I'm just wondering, and thank you very much for the presentation. The, the plan refers specifically to response to emergency and/or disaster and defines both of those things, but I guess, is the plan meant to act in certain unanticipated situations that are not covered by the definition of emergency or disaster within the plan? Or does it confine itself specifically to those terms, because that's what the provincial legislation describes?
Mr. Lamorte?
The plan is intentionally all-hazard, meaning anything that happens, you're able to tap into the resources of this plan. The organization, the information, the flow, the functions that are needed there, it's there for you. Now, the province will not always reimburse for every small little thing that we might think is an emergency, doesn't trigger provincial response. So, a windstorm, for example, that happens all the time, but in some, some of our cases, we may have trees down in public parks, and it's something that we need to attend to. The province wouldn't reimburse us for that. So, there's that caveat there. But it's intentionally made to be very flexible. If you need it, it's there for you. Anybody can activate it.
Thank you. And I have, I do have a question of my, my own, Chief, and that is, I was involved with EOC operations quite extensively when I was in Manitoba, and so certainly, you did local city or provincial, and you either got called to join in, or you got cut loose and you didn't participate, and everybody did their own training. But the one thing we all had to do was identify vulnerabilities in our areas. And I think, when I think of that, I think of certainly some, we have seniors residences with a fair number of occupants here in the district of Oak Bay, and facilities where we may have residents who are not physically, they may have physical limitations and not be able to respond. So, I'm just wondering, for some of those specialized facilities, how, how are their plans reviewed? How would their plans coordinate with some of these plans that, that you're doing on, on the emergency planning for the district?
Thank you, Chair. So, one of the key things that we do is network. And we have a variety of different emergency planning committees, groups, associations within the region. You may have heard of the Regional Emergency Management Partnership. You know, that involves capital regional district and local government representatives as well as provincial entities, where we work on initiatives, share information. We have the Local Government Emergency Planning Advisory Committee, which is very active. And then we also have another group called the Regional Coordination Advisory Commission. And that is a very large group, which meets together four times a year or so, and it's non-government organizations as well as local government, provincial, federal, crown corporations. And there's an opportunity there for us to, you know, share information like this and learning. We work quite a bit with Canadian Red Cross in opportunities, opportunities like that, and groups like Island Health. And so, when we get large facilities or even smaller facilities that have, might have vulnerable groups in there, we typically have a network set up where we can have an established communication conduit, where normally, if they're doing emergency planning changes, they will normally reach out to us and ask if we want to review their plan. So, that's typically the easiest way to go, rather than us trying to chase individual entities around. But we do definitely go out of our way to work with groups like Oak Bay Volunteer Services and other organizations like that, to make them aware of when there's events such as severe weather events or heat dome, heat, severe heat events, that we've got a super solid working relationship, and there's an opportunity for us to reach out to them and ensure that, that their networks are checking in on those vulnerable sectors, because they, in some cases, they're there on a daily basis. And they're happy to sort of be eyes and ears and really be on the lookout to support people. And then they will refer quite often, you know, often might be to BC Emergency Health Services or to BC Housing, or in some cases to us, and we can be a bridge to other support networks.
Thank you for that information, Chief. I don't see any other hands raised around the table. So, thank you very much for that report. We, the, there is a recommendation here, if somebody, oh, right, the public. Would any members of the public like to come forward and speak on the issue?
I'll move receipt. And I'd like to move a recommendation, please.
Second, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you so much, Chief, and Mr. Lamorte and Ms. Schenk for, for this presentation. It's been, I know it's a subject that is, you know, great interest to everyone in the, in the community, so thanks for your work on this. Next item on the agenda is new business. There, I don't think there's any new business for the agenda, no. Then the last item is to call for adjournment of the meeting.
Move the chairman.
All in favor? Yes. And now we will take a, about a five-minute break, and we are going to be convening a council meeting to continue the rest of the businesses before us. Thank you.
Okay. All right, everyone. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Time is now exactly eight twenty-five. Calling to order the special council meeting of February 18th. As we do this, we just want to acknowledge, as Councilor Patterson did, that we are holding this meeting in the traditional territories of the Coast and Straits Salish Peoples, specifically the Lakewongan people known today as the Tsonghis and the Esquimalt or Kasapsim nations, and their historic connections continue to this day. I do want to just acknowledge, this is a special council meeting dealing with really just one item, which is some business that we just got a little late on getting to, and it needs some, some substantial discussion, so we deferred it to this meeting. So, with that, we have approval of the agenda in front of us. Move consecutive, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed, none opposed? My remarks are essentially nonexistent. I do just want to acknowledge that Councilor Green had to leave at the end of that last meeting and won't be joining us, and Councilor Watson is away as well. So, we have, we do have two seats vacant tonight, but they are, they will be able to view this and come back to the future meetings in any case. So, with that, we move to item 4.1, the only item on the agenda, which is the amendment bylaws for refinement of the infill housing program. Mr. Bold, do you wish to provide a brief introduction? I'm happy to sort of provide some context as well in terms of where we're at with this process.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this report follows up on discussions in November, where council selected a number of small changes to the infill housing program to, to make a couple of improvements. And those particular improvements are now in front of you. Particularly today, we're looking at the zoning ballot changes, and the staff report outlines exactly where these changes are. There's a number of minor staff edits as well, more to do with housekeeping and catching up on some things that we run into over the last six months. And we're here to answer any questions you might have, and the bylaws are here for consideration of three readings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as council will recall, but if anybody's watching and doesn't have the history of this, the infill housing bylaws in compliance with the provincial order, Bill 44, were passed back in June. There was some follow-up report that looked at some other possible tweaks to that bylaw. Council has advanced a number of those. Some of them have gone through first and second and third reading and for adoption on that. For parking bylaw and tree protection bylaw, those changes were meant through the last meeting, a little more straightforward. Most of the things related to the zoning itself got deferred off to June. This one, around some changes to the accessory dwelling units specifically, which also included some aspects of permeability of surfaces and things, was considered for this go-around. And so, because we didn't have a lot of time to deal with it at that meeting, at that meeting where there was a large number, and because there was, it does have some interconnected complexity, we started getting into questions, and it was clear that we needed a bit of time to talk about this before considering next motions. We just had a motion to defer, to give us a bit more time at this table. That does not mean we have to spend hours tonight, I'm just gonna say that. I'm happy to deal with this fairly expediently if we can, but there's a lot here and a lot of interdependencies. So, I'm gonna turn to my council members if they have questions of staff at this time. Counselors Martin, you had a chance to ask some questions at the last meeting.
Yes, thank you. I had all my questions answered at the last meeting. I have no questions.
Okay, not seeing other questions of staff at this time? So, I do have some questions, so maybe this is just for my benefit. So, I, when this was, the, the, the language framing this was, was around the section of bylaw changes in the, in that report, referred to this as, you know, having incentives for, to reduce the, like, the need for accessory dwelling units to have basements and to sort of minimize impacts of overlook, was kind of the framework of this. So, can I just, I was trying to get my head around a little bit, can you just explain how that, because one of the issues here is the building height change from 4.4 to six meters. Can we just understand a little bit about what that does? I'm assuming that's to incent people to go above ground and not dig big holes, but is that, perhaps you could just outline how that impact happens and, and does it do? just outline how that impact happens, and does the basement still get counted for floor area, and so there's, there's no benefit for going down at that point, or just perhaps an overview of why that benefits? Mr. Green?
Good evening, worship. Members of council, yeah, it's essentially to encourage building up rather than digging down. Obviously, it's more cost-effective to build up than build down. I guess one of the, some of the early feedback that we received from people who wished to build an accessory dwelling unit, particularly an accessory dwelling unit above a garage, was that because of the limited building height, you wouldn't be able to get windows in that, essentially, in that dwelling unit above a garage. So that was the intent of increasing the building height, and to also discourage basements and the impacts that basements have on critical root zones of trees that are, that are found in rear yards, as well as also impacting our storm drainage through having, have a pump, pump stormwater into our infrastructure.
Thank you for that clarification. That's very helpful. And I do note that it's still quite a bit shorter for the building height than the main, the main building is. In staff's opinion, that, that six-meter height is sufficient for the kind of living that's required and the incidents that you've seen?
Yeah, it was, the roof height was never the issue, it was the building height, where there were some concerns in relation to having windows in that, in that second story that was not really feasible or possible with the current building height.
Right. Thank you. It was just 4.4 meters, I believe. Thank you. And just for my confirmation, I appreciate they're different in the R1 through R3 zones, but the proposed, the existing and proposed side yard setbacks for both first and second stories then would be one and a half meters? Is that correct, for both the back, the rear yard and the side yard setback?
Correct. In the R4, R5, it would be a 1.5 meter setback, but in the R1, R2, and R3, it would be a three-meter setback.
Okay.
And no second-story setback. There is no second-story setback on a accessory dwelling unit. Second-story setback rule only applies to principal buildings.
Sure. Thank you for that. And can I just, maybe just tease that one out a little bit, because I was, I struggled with that a little bit, to have, you know, second-story setbacks on the primary building but not the secondary. And I appreciate, so some of this may be coming because of the, the use of these over garages, which do have the one and a half meter setback. But can I just get an understanding of the rationale for not doing the second-story setback, because there's obviously, obviously some potential for significant overlook in rear yards if, for these buildings as well? Mr. Bull?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the language in the zoning bylaw about second-story setback is older. It has been, had been there already. It does refer to a principal building. And it's not something that we had flagged or identified for a change necessarily. And it's, it's a minor messing setback on that second floor, if the building is right at that setback. So it might, it could have the same effect as for a principal building, that's correct. But because of the history of the language, that's, I think, why it wasn't flagged earlier, because I think very early on in the process, there was a different recommendation to consider taking the second-story setback out. But that's, it did stay in, stay in as per council direction, but we didn't explore any change to that language necessarily. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bull. So, and I appreciate that. And the, the discussion around the, seeing this as potential for, for over top of garages does make sense from a, you know, a configuration and dry perspective. Can I just ask then, just, in reading this, I, there were some efforts made to look at ways of minimizing overlook and so forth, like having the semi-opaque second-story windows. And I'm just curious about that. You know, is there, has staff sort of considered looking at things like, like decks, if they're above the first story, to be maybe always having to be oriented more towards the, you know, their own yard as opposed to other people's yards, so away from the side yard or rear yard setback? And perhaps maybe making it a requirement to have opaque windows on the side yard that they're closest to, just so that there's a minimization of overlook? Are those things that maybe staff could, I appreciate we have a bylaw in front of us, we're not going to make, going back and making changes, or, you know, wordsmithing at this point. I'm just kind of curious from a, from an impact minimization perspective, are those, are those things that we could contemplate as, as ways of minimizing the impact of the second story? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Bull.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I do recall having discussions on this with the consultant, and the current language is, we landed on the current language, this is the recommended language that we came up with, to maintain design flexibility, but given some parameters if the accessory dwelling unit gets closer to the property line, because these particular provisions only apply in certain little range of setback, because there is a minimum of two for windows and decks, the decks particularly. But if you're three or more, then it becomes a regular deck. We did consider or explored, well, what if the deck just faces one direction, probably to inwards perhaps, but it does restrict the floor plan right away quite drastically, right? There can be all kinds of different conditions, maybe that parcel is on the laneway, so maybe the back, the rear lot line is a suitable candidate for a deck facing out. They have irregular lot lines, different slope terrain versus flat terrain. So we landed on language that still gives a fair amount of flexibility, but if designers are looking up or going too close to the, so to say, the, where we think it becomes really sensitive, then these requirements for opaque windows and for screening of decks come into play. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I think it was a question asked last time about what the screening of decks is. So can I just get some clarification of what that is? Because obviously, if it's, if it's an opaque wall, that's one thing, if it's, I'm just curious about what that, what the definition of that would actually, more than the definition, but what the impact of that would actually be?
Yeah, thank you, to you, Mayor. It could take different, different shapes, but it is, it's more than a railing. So if the, if the second or first story deck, it would have some kind of a screening, maybe it's letters of sorts, or it is something else that does screen the view to the neighbors. It could also be, depending on how the setup of the site is, maybe, maybe the screening is actually on the ground still, and depending on the terrain, it might work that way. So the wording is very tentative, but it's, again, also by giving some flexibility to, for designers to come up with their solutions and consider options that work well for the site. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I guess, I'm going to go back to sort of, I was, and you answered, you partially answered the question with how it is worded right now, and that the semi-opaque is on the, you know, if it's closer to the, within, I think, two meters of the side yard, then they have to be that, but three meters and more, they do not. Is it, I mean, I'm just curious, is it reasonable to look at that a bit more broadly, if we're sort of, you know, the windows facing the closest lot line are essentially have to be opaque, so that they're sort of a natural, because the difference in two and three meters doesn't make much of a difference in terms of overlook, but perhaps just, you know, requiring that in terms of the side, side lot pieces? Mr. Green?
I guess, yeah, the answer to that question is yes, we could. However, I guess what we try to achieve is a bit of a balance, because what we wouldn't want to see then is all windows on that side to be semi-opaque, and therefore, we need to also ensure that we are creating some ADUs that have livability, and given that we don't do that for single-family dwellings currently, or for any other developments, or principal building on a lot. So we need to try and achieve that balance between ensuring some privacy concerns are addressed, but not also, whilst also trying to ensure that those ADUs have livability factors in terms of being able to be, yeah, lived in appropriately.
Thank you for that. The other question I want to get to is just the impermeable surface pieces. And I wasn't sure, I did, I just asked the question ahead of time about that, what, because we, in that original report, and it's not in the bylaw, there were some examples of that. And I will say, my first reaction to it was that the 55%, 60% on the R4, R5 lots seemed very high. And is it possible to bring those diagrams up on a screen, just so we can, we can see what they look like? Because I think, I still struggle a little bit with those, that, that level.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think Tone at the back is starting that up.
Oh, great.
So yeah, these are diagrams from that report from November 18, and show different scenarios. Could you scroll up a little bit, or see, maybe go to?
It was C and D, I think.
C and D. We can start with C. That, that shows a certain scenario where, if it's possible to zoom in a little bit on that lower bit, that's the relevant part. Thank you. It shows a couple of scenarios. So if I go from left to right, on the left-hand side, you see the lot coverage, which applies to buildings. The maximum is 30, and what is shown is 30% lot coverage. Then another element of paved surfaces on a lot is paved service, like driveways, other little walkways. And on that second illustration, in our bylaw, it's divided in two ways. It's a bit small to see, but there's a maximum to the front yard, and a maximum to the backyard. Scenario where 20%, 23% of the front yard is covered. And then the third illustration is impermeable coverage, and that is anything else, patios, and, and other paved services, not in the front or in the rear yard. It gets a little bit complicated in our bylaw. That, that particular number is proposed to be 60% maximum, and what is shown here is 52%. And then on the last one, the fourth one, on the right-hand side, that's kind of, that's what you then have pretty much left over, and that's for live landscaping or non-paved, non-per, it's, it's surface that is permeable. And a minimum in the bylaw proposes 20%. This shows still 33%. There's also a darker green section there, and that had to do with consolidated live landscaping area. And that is an area that's now specifically in the bylaw to support planting of trees. So that's scenario C, and scenario D similarly shows the higher numbers. We could put that on the screen as well, Mayor, if you.
Yeah, I think that's helpful, just so that's, that showed 52% in that example, and this is showing 60%, as I recall.
That's right. Yeah, so this one here is the max out scenario, so to say, where this is more or less what it looks like when, and let me see, yeah, the lot coverage for the buildings on the left-hand side is maximized. And the third one there, the impermeable coverage, I think in this case, a very large patio at the back, would get this site plant up to 60%. But still remaining on the right-hand side is 24% live landscaping area. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Can I just, under our bylaws, is paved surface, or I guess it's impermeable surface definition, is that variable? Like, if someone, if we, if there's a lower number set by default in the bylaw, is it a variance process? Or what is the process if, if applicant wishes to have higher levels of paving?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, each of these elements are different bylaw provisions, and they're, that one is definitely variable. So we don't, haven't seen a lot of those that I'm aware of. Mr. Green might have more information on that.
Yeah, we see, we receive a few variances each year for the front yard and rear yard paving requirement.
But that's quite a bit lower than, that's at 40% or something. Is that correct?
Yes. But it used to be, that was increased in June of last year, so it used to be, yeah, we did change it last year, didn't we, in terms of, in June, we, we did amend the front yard and rear yard paving, and so that has increased than what it was previously. And I don't think we have received a variance since we amended it in June of last year, but prior to June of last year, council had received variances for the front yard and rear yard paving regulation.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask a harder question to answer, and that is sort of, what is the, what is the driver for this? And is this based on feedback that's come in, or has this been more, like, this was sort of the original recommendation, so they're just, it's just being brought forward now as a, as a principle thing, that it's easier, if it's higher, because you expect less variances? I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, if we're not getting a lot of asks for variances, why we would change what's current in the bylaw? Mr. Bull?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think the change here is not so much the paved service areas. Those remain the same from June, but the impermeable coverage, that is a new concept. It builds on the live landscaping, or was it the other way around? The live landscaping was inserted in the bylaw in June, and the paved service, or sorry, the impermeable coverage is now added in as well, to give further definition to how far impermeable service can be established. The proposal is based on a comparison of two other bylaws that the consultant was aware of, and, but have been customized to our context. The examples that we looked at actually went to higher percentages, but in a pay context, who our modeling didn't prove to be necessary. And these ones seemed, yeah, in the line of the other numbers that we established in June, it's all, all, it's all centered or focused on giving reasonable options to create site plans and plans for new housing options. And that's where these numbers are from. So I could, I do have the information from the other communities, if you're interested to delve into that more, but that's, that's where the number came from.
Can you just share with us, I think there was Victoria and Iskwaamwalt or something like that, was it not?
No, no, in this case, actually, different communities, specific to the impermeable coverage.
Okay.
Yeah. White Rock and Kelowna were looked at for, as comparison. And, yeah, and they allow for, their maximums for these kind of lots are a little bit higher, or quite, well, there are 70 or 80%. Thank you.
70, 80% overall impermeable coverage. Okay, thank you. Can I, last question I have here is just regarding the heritage language, there's pieces in there. And I was, I started to read through it, and I was trying to interpret it, I thought, I'm just going to ask the question, because the language says that, you know, under the density should not exceed four dwelling units, which is part of Bill 44, but it says for heritage designated lots in Schedule C, so those are the ones that we are listed, the density shall not exceed two dwelling units. I'm just trying to get my head around, does that mean that people who own heritage homes have an extra bar to pass to get higher density on their lot? Is that, is that how I'm reading that?
Yes. So if council may recall, on May the 16th of last year, council, when staff presented a report on options in relation to small-scale multi-unit housing, council chose not to, or chose to apply for the exemption for heritage designated lots, as opposed to applying the SMO densities to existing heritage designated properties. As such, we, in June of last year, and following adoption of the SMO bylaws, we informed the Minister of Housing that the following properties were exempt from SMO, and as such, are only entitled to a density of two units. Obviously, if council wished to reconsider that cap, then it, obviously, council can, it could apply SMO densities to heritage designated properties. And so we put, the previous line was in the bylaw that says that heritage designated properties as of November 30th, 2023, are only titled to two units. But what we wanted to do through this amendment was to make it crystal clear to property owners and to staff, who, in the few years' time when we're reviewing building permits, that staff and the property owner are aware of what the density entitlements are on that specific property.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Bull?
And another part I'd like to add is that part of this limitation is also, on the flip side, there is a better or a more flexible opportunity for heritage designated properties. But they would need to follow a heritage revitalization agreement route, and then there could be other options on that property. And although this is limiting through that particular tool, you actually have more flexibility to, to come up with creative plans, if that's, if that's desired. At the same time, I think this is also the rationale in this bring was to, to not necessarily incentivize redevelopment of heritage properties. That was another reason to put this forward. So it was a bit of a collection of considerations that led to this last bring. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bull. Those are all my questions, so I appreciate the answers provided. I see, at least one other hand popped up as a result of that. Go ahead, councillor, brief wait.
Thanks, thanks, Mayor. I just want to go back to the impermeable coverage on the lot. So that picture that we see there, is that RS4, RS5 lot? Yes? Five?
If you're mayor five, R5 example, yes.
And, and that's 60% impermeable, or 55%?
It's showing 60%.
60%, because I, I do find that quite a extensive piece of impermeable coverage. And I actually would prefer that we would reduce that and have people come and ask us for, for more coverage, rather than give them the opportunity to have that much coverage on a, on a lot. I find that, I find that pretty unbelievable to be able to cover, to have that much impermeable coverage on, on that much impermeable coverage on a lot that size. So I, I mean, I'd like to hear what everybody else thinks about that. But I would like to see that reduced to what it was before, which I think you said was 40%. Is that correct?
After you, Mayor. For this particular provision, we didn't have language. So this is a new arrangement. But it also means that if council wanted to make changes, would be good to know what direction that is, or if there's any specific ideas. But it probably would be best in that case to circle back to the consultant and see what the trade-offs are if the percentage is lowered. Thank you.
You can also, Braithwaite, I have Appleton and Smart, but I'm just going to suggest, if there are some desire just to have those, what I'll probably do is just, we can collect sort of thoughts. If people want to see any changes to this, then we can give that back as direction. And just, I want to make it as clear as possible if those are things that we want to have come back. So I appreciate that approach, Mr. Bull. Go ahead, Councilor Appleton.
I think you worship in through you. So then maybe I'll start with my second question, which pertains to what you were just talking about, through you to staff. Then I guess I would ask the question, I mean broadly, there is some need to accommodate an increased impervious area just to accommodate the potential layouts implicit in the SMO legislation, right? Like there's, it's going to be difficult to achieve the historical, granted that this is a new metric, but if we take the front yard and backyard metrics from the previous bylaw and sort of amalgamate them into an equivalent to this, it's going to be difficult to achieve an overall pervious surface coverage similar to the previous bylaw with up to four units per lot. Like that's going to be very, very difficult to achieve, or could present an undue limitation as per what the, what the province has defined as such, right?
Bull? And it may be helpful to understand what the lot coverage is required, that we've already allowed for impermeable by buildings, to put that in some context.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and through you. That's indeed the case. The other changes that were already made were changed to lot coverage for buildings. But not a lot. That's in this table. That shows 30. What is that correct? Okay. So that lot coverage for building is across the zones at 30%. But I believe that it's not a major change, if at all a change. We did include a mechanism for additional coverage for ADUs, but only in the smaller lots. You might recall that, but something that council specifically asked for. Then the front yard and rear yard paved areas, they did increase to accommodate SMO. And I'm looking here at a table that our consultants prepared. It depends on the lot size, what 25% of the front yard is and 25% of the rear yard. In the case of the smaller lots, it goes to 40% plus 25%. But there's an interesting little tally here that, let me see, if you, last range, if you combine the lot coverage for buildings and the paved coverage that we had put in place in June in R1, that gets up to 35%. And then the range tops out at 52% for R5. So 52% is already in our bylaw currently. And, and the reason to give a little bit more space for this impermeable surface is that that still allows a little bit of space for patios or landscaping, or maybe there's a driveway that needs to cross over further than on another lot. So the remaining 8%, so to say, if you all maxed out, each of these items is meant for a little bit more flexibility, particularly around landscaping solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I appreciate that clarification. Just with my question really primarily to do with impermeable surface coverage. And I think that if I get this right, as I recall, the previous bylaw did not provide a lot of definition around pervious versus impervious, or certainly didn't go into the level of detail that the current one does. So just for clarity, the current, the proposed new definition of impermeable surface coverage includes, exclude, such things that are not impermeable are things like hard surfacing with permeable elements such as gravel rocks, wood chips, et cetera. And nothing in the bylaw specifically prescribes that those, you can't park a car on that. So essentially, the parking spaces outlined by SMO legislation can be pervious with the description that's here. Is that correct?
Yeah, to staff, Mr. Bull?
Yeah, through you, Mayor, yes, that's correct. Yeah, there's flexibility there. Yeah.
Through you, Your Worship, as a follow-up question. Given the overall concern about how to accommodate, how to provide green space and how to accommodate, you know, the necessary parking for vehicles in an increased density situation, is there, is our staff aware of any other situation where the SMO bylaws have been implemented such that permeable parking becomes mandated? With the understanding that I know that the portion of a parking or driveway structure that passes the municipal right-of-way cannot be pervious, but is the portion on the lot sometimes mandated to be pervious?
Staff, are you aware of any places that require that?
Through the mayor, yeah, we're not aware of examples like that. Maybe the consultant would, because they have taken quite a wider look at different examples. Certain question we can take away, but especially we don't have that information right now.
Thank you. I have Councilor Smart next.
Thank you. I'm through you, Mayor. I think my question has mostly been answered. It was along the same lines as Councilor Appleton, but it was just, I was just trying to pull up and refresh myself on the RS5 zone. And there's a little bit of, I believe, additional lot coverage allowed if you have more density on the lot. I was trying to remember how we landed on, on that. But I was, I was just thinking about if, what is the maximum lot coverage allowed when you have an ADU? And how much is really left for that, those interstitial spaces of pathways and driveways? And while I do acknowledge that you can have permeable driving spaces, there are needs of some residents to have hardscape for strollers, for mobility devices, et cetera. So I do want to make sure that we have a bylaw that allows for really the type of housing we're trying to create, which would, which would be that somebody could apply for a single-family house, an accessory dwelling unit, and, you know, what might only be an extra 15 or 20% additional patio space, sidewalks, et cetera. I realize this is not much of a question and just more of a reflect back. But yeah, that's just where I've landed. If we, what I'm understanding, I guess my question will be, we will definitely see, it sounds like staff might be projecting a lot of variance applications coming to council if we reduce the amount of this new impermeable coverage.
Go ahead, Mr. Bull.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Following up on, I think there was a question there about, well, what's, what's the difference there between the scenario of a principal building and ADU, the front and rear yard paved areas? So I do have some information here in this table. It's still model-based, right? For example, this particular table takes the minimum lot size in the zone, but in every lot has a different size, usually a little bit bigger. So it varies. But I do see here again that the, if, between the coverage for buildings and the front and the rear yard, theoretically, that that maxes out at 52% in the R5 lot, 47% in R4. And then that difference is about 8% or 12% perhaps. And depending on the lot size, I see a number here, just to give you the indication, in that smallest lot, R5, 10% amounts to 55 square meters on an R5 lot, which is about 600 square feet. So that's kind of the extra wiggle room that is created in that particular case for landscaped solutions or for that area on the sides of the houses. So, yeah, hopefully that helps. Thank you.
Any other questions for members of staff at this time? I don't see any. Okay. So what we have for us in front of us tonight is if council wishes, we can, we can move these forward as is. If people wish to see any changes, then. See the bylaw at this time as opposed to, because I think there are some interdependencies on these bylaws that need to be considered. I'm just going to say from my perspective, I think, I am, I appreciate the argument for making the minimizing variance asks by having higher impermeable coverage. But I do think that impermeable is just that, it's impermeable. It's not semi-permeable or other things. And I just think that if we're trying to meet our rainwater management and other climate pieces, and give room to breathe for other trees around the neighborhood and things to get water into the ground, I think we probably want to err on the side of more impermeable surface. That's where I fit. And if I look at that diagram, at 60%, I have a very hard time seeing that, achieving the goals of the community from that perspective. So I appreciate I'm looking at this from a layperson's perspective, but I think this is the same, I think most people looking at that coverage level would see it as significantly higher than we've had traditionally inside the community. So I think I'd feel more comfortable with that. I'm actually frankly satisfied with the answers given the other ones, the questions I had on the setbacks and the heights and the other pieces of it. I think those are all reasonable approaches to those, to those recommendations. I think we're trying to make this, make them feasible and possible. And I think those, the accommodations given there are, to my mind, strike me as being reasonable. But that, the lot coverage for, or the impermeable coverage to me seems excessive at this point. So that's kind of where I'm landing. Go ahead, Councilor Braithwaite.
So Mayor, I, I think I'm on the same page with you as you on this particular item. Would it be, would it be feasible to perhaps make a motion to keep the impermeable surfaces at their current number? Or is there a better way of perhaps stating that?
It's a little bit difficult, just because there is a, there isn't a current impermeable number. It's, it's our paved surface and other, and we have other ways of describing it. So we're changing the, the language. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The other, the flip side of that, if, because it's a new definition, so this number is new, but the number could be closer or could be equal to whatever the combined estimated amounts are for the other elements that we already have in place. That could be kind of the more minimal approach. And then it would be up to designers to look at their side and pick and choose where they want to use that coverage for. So, but that's probably a more general direction from council is, would be helpful. You can describe what your preference is here, and then we'll figure that out in consultation with the consultant. Thank you.
Yeah, and I don't want to presuppose that that's the will of council. I just try to, if there's a procedural pieces here, because I think, I think there is rationale, given the complexity of this, that we give staff the chance to kind of look at this and come back with some recommendations, as opposed to inventing a number at this table on the fly and then asking it to come back. Unless, but if council's comfortable with that, we can do it. I just, that'd be my preference. If, if the will of council is to, is to, is to lower that impermeable surface number. But again, that's up to council. Go ahead, Councilor Smart.
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Mayor, to staff, if council was to want to have staff relook at, at that number, potentially bringing it down to, say, 55% or to more of the status quo of what it is now, could we splice off that item and still move forward everything else today? I guess that, that's, procedurally, I'm just wondering how we can not potentially delay everything else based on, on this one moment? Or if we were able to come to the direction of another percentage, would it be as simple as that? Or are there unrelated things that we're not able to easily consider today at the table?
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to let staff answer that question. I'm going to recommend that we just, if we want to make that change, just send it back. That's a very simple change to come back. It can be done with, I think, quite quickly. And the rationale for that is that we're reading bylaws today. So it becomes very awkward for us to say, read first and second reading, and then strike all aspects. Like it's just, because it's a legislative approval, my comfort with that is that we actually approve the bylaw as provided in front of us. But that's procedurally, but staff, I'll hand it over to you if that's, if that's a process that you're, you may be more comfortable with than I am.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, in the table, we do have identified which sections those are. But it is a bit of a collection of them that could be left out. Yeah, this is a question we can relatively, well, it depends a bit on the timing, whether you need to submit materials then back to, to a next council meeting. I'm not sure if we can do that right away for next week necessarily, but say, the first meeting of March, we can come back, definitely have, have numbers, updated numbers for you based on the direction. So, yeah, either way, we can make it work. Thank you.
I'm going to suggest we underpromise and overdeliver. I'm going to suggest that those changes would come back within a month, not necessarily next week or that fast. So I guess that's the context of the council. Is, are the changes here urgent enough to try and do that? Or are we okay with that, sending it back and having that come back as a cohesive whole within, within a month or so? That's just, I think that's, personally, I always like dealing with bylaws in their whole, as opposed to trying to parse them out. But, Councilor Smart, you had the floor?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor, to staff, I guess my question would, would be, not knowing what is on your plate, might this result in us having a whole bunch of variances in the next month? Or I just don't want to, obviously, knowing that some of this is perhaps coming to us because of stuff in stream, I don't know if it is. But I, is that going to result in us getting a whole bunch of variance applications just in the next month?
It's easy to answer if there's any in stream right now, Mr. Green or Mr. Bull. Do you know if there's, are you aware of any variances related to paving? I guess we paving coverage at this point?
I guess ultimately, we don't know the answer to that question, because we don't ask for that on, on the data table currently. When we ask applicants, you know, we do have a couple of variance applications to the rear yard paving, for example, and therefore they could potentially also need to add a further variance. But obviously, they would need to amend their plans to show us what that calculation, calculation is to, before we fully understand whether then that does also trigger a second variance on that application.
Thank you. Councilor Smart, anything else?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor, to staff, I guess my thought was more the other things in this bylaw that we're not moving forward with today. Does staff see that as problematic, waiting another month to deal with the other bylaw changes?
Mr. Bull?
I think it's, as far as we can tell, it's, it's, those are not major issues that need to be addressed. We happened to have a look at the list of infill housing applications earlier this week. There's currently 14 that have been submitted. And four have submitted a variance related to that. But it also means that 10 other projects, as far as we know, some of them are still under review, have been able to work within the current program. So I think the urgency is not super high. But, thank you.
Okay. So one of two things here, are there a motion to first and second reading at this point, or a motion to, I'm hearing sort of general support for the changes around the table. Everybody seems to be nodding on that one. So I think, you know, if this, if the impermeable surface is, is looking to be, to change, I think it, probably my recommendation would just have a motion that would refer the, these bylaw changes back to staff to, to reduce the impermeable coverage and let them come back with a recommendation on that.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
So it's moved? This is to refer it back to staff for those changes? Moving seconded? Councilor Appleton?
Just a point of clarification, Your Worship. Not necessarily opposed to that, but is the, I mean, I'm in favor of altering potentially, if, if the number's going to be altered, then it's altered based on some kind of comparative analysis of what the previous material looked like. So do staff understand that to sort of be a comparative analysis with what we had previously, and potentially some quasi-mandatory components that we're going to have to include, just as far as like their SMO limitations, or certain things that would have to be considered? So I just, I just wanted clarification on that.
Sure, thank you. I think, Mr. Bull, I mean, would it be helpful, I guess, for us to, in the, in the motion, refer to making this more in alignment with what the current sort of practices are of pieces, that was sort of, that sort of 52 to 48% kind of range, I think, is for the different zones. But would that be helpful to sort of reference the sort of current things? I just don't want to be too pieces to, to Councilor Appleton's point. Mr. Bull?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think that would be helpful. And along the lines of what Councilor Appleton is suggesting, suggesting that that's how we would look at it. We would look at what already is spoken for, so to say, with the current regulation, and then come up with a, consult, if our consultants come up with a proposal for a revised number for your consideration.
Councilor Appleton?
Thank you, Your Worship, for that, that clarification. I would almost see it as sort of a range of almost scenarios, because the two things don't directly equate with one another. But I'm hopeful that staff might be able to use the previous guidelines, front and rear yard coverage limits and those types of things, building coverage, to sort of work up a comparative analysis of what, under certain circumstances, different former RS zones would have looked like compared to the new proposal in different R zones. zones would have looked like compared to the new proposal in different R zones. So I'm hoping I'm making that clear, but I think it would be useful to see it zone by zone and sort of comparative to what the, the previous situation was, and including any types of mandatory components that are just necessary to include as a somewhat of a variable because of the way SMOU development is going to have to happen, including the parking limits.
Sure, and I believe the only concern here really raises R four and R five, so those are the, those are the pieces that we seem to have a limit issue on. So I'm going to just turn to staff again, I mean, I hear that the ask there is sort of making sure that we're doing a holistic look at this, with not being done just, but would it be helpful for, for this motion to be, would it be helpful for the motion to be a bit more clear that we want it closer to the existing kind of, it's just hard because we don't have an existing impermeable, we have existing paved surface and pieces, so I'm just curious about whether, what staff would prefer, if you'd like more or less clarity on this one.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, yeah, I would like to have an indication from council, what the direction is, how far back, so to say, right? As little as possible, or somewhere in the middle, perhaps, but that's, I think the wording that you just suggested would be given indication, so that, that would be helpful for us, thank you.
Okay, so the motion right now is just to refer it back to staff to reduce the coverage for R four and R five, for impermeable surfaces. I'm trying to think of what appropriate language might look like for that, maybe just something as simple as more in line with what current paved surface limitations are, or something along those lines, something, so we're indicating a reduction, but not being too pedantic about it, is that, is that sufficient, Mr. Bull, would that be? So I have a mover of that, moved and seconded, so the motion is, I'm just going to treat it as a friendly amendment in that case, so it's just basically, the motion is to refer it back to staff with some, with some, asking for some changes to reduce the R four and R five impermeable surface coverage, more in line with what's currently provided for in the paved surface limitations. Councilor Smart, speaking to the motion?
Thank you, speaking to the motion, I will support the motion, and I just wanted to elaborate on, like if, if staff does come back having a little bit more of a buffer than is currently allowed, I guess I just wanted to elaborate on how, there's a lot of surfaces that think, people think are permeable, but aren't actually permeable, like for instance, like a more hard-packed gravel pathway is actually not permeable, having wood borders on a garden is not actually permeable, and so there's a bunch of gray area things that I think need a little bit of wiggle space to be absorbed, so I'm actually hoping staff comes back with something closer to what we had, but with just a little buffer, because what's going to happen is people will have to show landscape plans, and there's going to be all these things that, that are not really a paved area, but are not actually permeable. And so I think that's where this change in definition needs to have a little bit of flexibility, but I really appreciate the intent of what we're doing at the table right now, which is to ensure we have as much permeable area as possible.
Thank you for that. Can I just, you spurred a question that I had, I did notice that in the definitions of permeable surfaces, gravel paths at least, and I think driveways as well are counted as permeable, interlocking pavers are not, which is reasonable, is there a differentiation between gravel, because obviously some very hard-packed gravel like driveways is much less permeable than something like a gravel path, but my recollection on this is that the definition is essentially just as all gravel surfaces are considered permeable for the purposes of the bylaw, and we just have a quick look at that, or maybe just, I'll leave it actually as friendly as this, if you would take that away, and as, as you're doing that review, maybe just have a quick look at that as well, to make sure that our definitions are reasonable on those pieces, because I think we do want to make sure that we're, we're actually capturing real impermeable surfaces. I've got nods from staff, so we'll leave it there. Councilor Smart?
Yeah, thank you, and through you, Mayor, to staff, I guess, yeah, I would bring up the question of, like for instance, the specifications from engineering for driveways that are hard-packed gravel surface are specifically to not be permeable, and so I think it would defeat the purpose of our bylaws if we were allowing for non-permeable areas to be permeable.
Kind of would. All right, I don't see any other hands on the motion, so I'm happy to call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed, none opposed, that carries, that is the only item on our agenda. I really appreciate that staff's bringing this back quickly and letting us have, and having all the answers at hand, I think that really helped our conversation. We really don't have anything else on the agenda here, we don't do any other new business or anything at special meetings, so.
Move adjournment.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor? Any opposed, none opposed, that carries? Thank you, everybody who stuck right out through the evening, and we will, we will see everybody here next Monday. Take care.